... scheduled school board meeting of July 26, 2021. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Superintendent.
Well, good evening everyone. I'm going to begin by asking if there are any changes to the agenda. Board?
Board? No ma'am.
All right. Seeing none, I'm going to recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting July 12, 2021.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five o. Okay. We're now at the public input portion. And so, everyone coming up, and we absolutely welcome you all here. You'll have three minutes. When you come to the microphone, if you give us your name, address, and then talk to us. So, we'll start off with a professional. Mr. Sirdar. And he was here earlier, but for the room's benefit, today is his birthday. So our board wishes him a happy birthday.
You know, loose lips sink ships. I told you. Don't pass the word. David Sirdar, 66 Wintergreen Drive, Fruitland Park, Florida, 347-31. And I'm a concerned senior citizen that does take action. And I'm so proud to see that the school board is filled tonight, almost to the capacity, because more people need to take action. And, well, they're crying around the country. You know, I used to work at Leesburg High School. I got a shirt right here. And I talked to Mr. Randall. He was on vacation. You know, my dad took vacations. He was elementary school principal. You know, I go to churches, you know, right here. People go to elementary school, like Mrs. Cunningham's school, I believe he went to your school. And, you know, he gets his name on the Style magazine in June. And there's a Jomari X Hopkins, who's the chief deputy clerk, but now he's moving his way on up in Fruitland Park. He's a great kid. You know, there are, people should take action and should be here. You know, there's a bike path coming through. I'm an athlete. And, well, parks on parks, our commissioner. You know, I was just at Senator Backsy's office this afternoon talking to Matt McLean, his hard-working legislative aide. And you could be an interim if you're in school. It's so important to take your education. There's too much fentanyl out there. People are on drugs. We've got to keep America first. And, well, I just want to represent the concerned citizens that are out there, that are keeping an eye on things and worried. And I go to Tallahassee. I talked to the governor's office the other day, Brenda Burnett, same contact as Rupp Hake, our representative, my representative. But I know Keith Truano out here, too. And people are running for office. You know, it is an honor to be in front of you folks. Well, just, you know, I just left the sheriff's office. Sheriff Pete Grudel, I got a picture with on my phone. But I run into a lot of sheriffs. And, well, we're worried about our kids' future. And the fentanyl. And the people, well, there's an American Cares Act, Livestream. Tim Camp is retired. He's the CEO of Livestream, a facility for behavioral health. And, well, not everybody. Well, I appreciate what I do. But I'm a concerned citizen that does take action. I am from Libertyville, Illinois, where my wife owned flower shops. And I know, we're all going to die. It is what you're doing. I have reference letters from funeral homes. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Tibbetts, we're going to hear you, no, excuse me, we're going to hear you at 11.03 when we get to that subject. Ken McCard.
Ken McCard, 11015 South MNL Grove Road, three small words, Leesburg, 34788. I just, speaking to this code of student conduct and without giving a whole bunch of information about my past, 39 years in a day kind of school system. So that's my perspective, which hopefully is not what we are experiencing here in Lake County. But I do know that one trend, and I think all education is, to lower our standards when it comes to conduct and what we expect out of kids and young people so that teachers can teach. And because the public many times is wailing for this, that, and the other, we change standards and it's not good for education. One of the tricks was schools would receive letters indicating where they were placed, say, senior high school, middle schools, elementaries, where they placed on the number of detentions, suspensions, indoor suspensions, expulsions, that kind of thing. And if you were in the wrong part of the bell curve, then you got a letter which said, you're not in keeping with the rest of the school system and we need to have some, you use some different techniques so that children aren't being punished and blah, blah, blah. Well, mathematically, you realize that you can always be, no matter what improvements you make, improvements meaning reduction in your, possibly reduction in your standards, that you can always be at the lower end of the bell curve. So it comes down to one detention a year, you could be on that bad part of the bell curve if nobody else is doing any detentions or suspensions or whatever. So I don't know if we're doing that kind of thing. I just know the public ought to realize that that is the kind of thing which principals, administrators are sometimes, in some places, are judged on, and it's not good for disciplining the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Mr. Vale, Tom Vale.
Thank you. My name is Tom Vale. I live at 7322 McGill Road in Groveland. I'm the organizer of a group of concerned citizens. We've named our group the Lake County School Board Overwatch Committee. Hope that's not too pretentious.
A little bit.
We've seen what's happened in schools around the country, and we want to make sure it doesn't happen here. We haven't heard some of the terrible things we've heard in other places and some of the problems that we've had or seen at school boards in other counties across the country. So, we've got a group here, mostly wearing yellow shirts. You'll see that from time to time now. I've got a brief statement that's printed. This is our statement of purpose. We concern patriotic citizens of Lake County, Florida, seeking to preserve the history, heritage, culture, and freedom on which our nation was founded, and desiring to convey our freedom and culture to our descendants, and recognizing that the future of our nation depends on the education of our youth. Seek to provide oversight and guidance to the Lake County School Board, to the principals and teachers of Lake County, and to parents of Lake County students by ensuring that sound educational principles are followed and taught, and by resisting the introduction of topics and principles which are unscientific, anti-American, racist, and divisive. That's all. And I've got copies if I'd...
Yeah, yeah, please. If you'll give them to Natalie, and then she'll hand them out to us. Thanks so much. Cheryl Gibson.
My name is Cheryl Gibson, and I live at 905 Georgia Avenue in Leesburg, Florida. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the school board for the positive things that you do in our community. And one of which is the program that I'm involved in, which is called the Delta Gems. Delta Gems actually started here in Leesburg in 2006. But I want to kind of give you a background because I'm part of a national organization for Delta Sigma Theta sorority. And I'm part of the Leesburg Alumni Chapter here that's supporting the mentor group that we do at Leesburg High School. Now, you're probably saying, well, what does that have to do with anything? Well, part of our concern is that it takes a village to raise a child. That's an old proverb. And before you can identify what the problems are, you need to also kind of think about what are some of the solutions. And so what we did was, they raised the flag and said they needed some help. And so me and my sisters and I, which is sorority, came to that need. So I just want to give you a couple of stats so you can see what has happened over the last couple of years. So, in 2018, 19 is actually when we came on the campus of Leesburg High School. We've actually serviced 56 girls. Of that, there were 17 juniors, 22 sophomores, and 17 freshmen. We did not include seniors that year because we felt that that would be a little taxing. Of that, we had 16 of the 56 girls to have to have some type of disciplinary action. We have a mixture. We're nonpartisan. Our total goal is to give them learning skills. Now, one of the subjects that we like to teach and we actually help the young ladies in has to do with self-improvement, getting ready for college exams, networking, goal-setting, money management. So those are the type of programs we offer. So, I'm going to bring you forward to this year. We actually serviced 50 young ladies. 100% of those ladies were seniors, just only five seniors, 14 juniors, 20 sophomores, and 11 freshmen. To show you the difference, we only had nine of the 50 young ladies to have to receive any kind of disciplinary action for this 2021 year. I think that that's a success story, especially with COVID being happening, because we were not able to meet personally, but we did a lot of our classes virtually with these young ladies. So again, I appreciate the time and the attendance that you've allowed us to go and actually be in on that campus and to try to make an impact for those young ladies. Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing. Kathy Smith.
My name is Kathy Smith, 4209 Atawalla Drive, Fruitland Park, Florida. I'm president of LCEA. I was here to actually introduce our new vice president to you. And she is still busy following up and trying to do some trainees for this week because we are very busy doing some trainees this week. So she is still working at the office. But we wanted to introduce ourselves and just say that basically we have some new leadership. We have new ideas, and we're hoping to work together to build better communication and to help our students and teachers.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, that concludes public input. So now then, I totally skipped over our representation. So like Mrs. Owens? I guess you're just going to stay there and watch.
We knew that a lot of our students that would be attending kindergarten may not want to come during the pandemic because of safety precautions and things. So parents were very concerned about that. So we thought it would be great to have a summer program where we could help remediate some of those skills as well as accelerate skills, some of those skills that students may be lacking or that they just need some extra support on. So the goal was to make sure that we could get as many incoming kindergarteners as well as pre-K students here at Rhymes to give them their basic foundational skills that they need to be ready for school in the fall. We wanted to thank our parents as well as our students and our teachers for coming out this summer and working with our students. We are excited to be able to help remediate as well as excel. And I would like to give an extended thank you to our board as well as our cabinet for providing this opportunity and all the departments that have worked so hard to make sure and ensure that our students are ready and successful as it relates to life skills and to be ready for secondary and post-education.
We've had a wonderful time here at Rhymes this summer, putting together classes for kids that are incoming, first graders and incoming kindergarteners, and developing that foundation with them that they might have missed a few steps in the year due to the pandemic. So we're strengthening their letter skills, their phonics, their number skills, building that rapport with them so they're not missing the transition time. And we've had a great time with parents, working with them to get the kids here to help them build that foundation.
(Music) We have three different programs here this summer. We have our ESY program for the preschool kids that have special needs. We have our BPK program, which is for the kids that are going to go into kindergarten. And we have assessments for them three times throughout the program to make sure they're progressing at the level they should be. And then we have our going into kindergarten, going into first grade, summer learning program, which is a little bit shorter, but it's so important to get those key elements for them.
I learned how to count my numbers.
Me too.
We're glad to have the opportunity to allow the kids to read, write, think, and talk each day, to do the early literacy program with them. And that way, they're just a little more ready, and they don't have that gap. And we are just wanting to boost them to the highest level of their potential.
My favorite part is going to read.
Mine is same thing.
This is where it starts. It starts at pre-K, those foundational skills. So I would like to thank Rhymes for hosting this event and all the other schools who have participated this summer. We do appreciate you, and we appreciate the staff that has took the time to work with our students. Thank you.
(Music) Great program. Glad that, you know, they were able to do this this year because we've had about four kids that have finished their summer learning in ingenuity. So they're going to be promoted. We're putting those grades in now for them. I really think this has been a very positive thing for us.
There are a couple of students that I can think about that they were just ready to give up. They didn't want to continue on. And by completing this program and having someone to sit there and work with them through this, it's given them hope that, oh, I can get it done. I can do it. I can be successful.
They're getting a chance to have that explicit instruction again, and in a more intimate setting. There's teachers that have different certifications that are able to interchange and switch out with them. We're able to help them review and really understand and grasp the skills that they missed. And seeing them feel the success of getting it done and knowing that the end result is going to be that they're moving on with their peers to the next grade level has been the most rewarding thing.
I am able to dedicate a little more time to each individual student in order to help them with whatever needs that they have, whatever course that they are currently working on. And I have actually had three of my students, as of today, three of my students complete what they needed to complete so that they will not be retained, they will pass.
I am very thankful for this opportunity for our children. We are pulling students from Oak Park as well as our own students, and it has been very beneficial. We have a variety of students here. Some were doing online learning, some were actually here. The majority are kids that were doing online learning. They now have the opportunity to be in small groups with some very wonderful and supportive teachers to regain credits so that they can go on to the next grade. We have some students that are just accelerating. And you look at their grades during the course of the last school year, and where they are now, it's a totally different atmosphere. So they're here with us now, and they are working very, very hard. And I'm starting to see some really positive things come from our students. Another aspect is having a student voice program. We have teachers that are coming in to teach them about finance, etiquette, things that don't necessarily get taught to all of our children all the time. I've seen different reactions from students like, oh my goodness, I didn't even really know that. I've seen some students that have planned their career, like, I didn't realize you could make that much money, or I didn't realize that you had to do this to go through there. Students have an opportunity to work collaboratively and also have their voices heard. So the student voice program is truly that. It's allowing students to have a voice in things that they're going to need that are going to carry them through the rest of their lives.
And the program is actually really good, and my work is actually getting up right now, and I'm happy I'm going to be able to pass.
And I feel like the teachers here are very involved in trying to help me get my work done.
Well, my grandmother always told me that when you go through different grades, it's going to get harder and harder. And I just took it as a joke. But when I got in sixth grade, I realized that it was actually getting harder. For next year, I hope I get to go to the seventh grade to show my grandmother that I can go and that I do realize what she was saying to me all those years. Because I would like to finish high school and get a well-paid job to take care of my family.
Elizabeth?
I have none.
Perfect. Okay Superintendent?
I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.03.
More members, you heard the superintendent's recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five o. Okay.
Before we move on to discussion, I just want to acknowledge Ms. Spratley is here with us this evening. That was, she was highlighted in our summer programs video. I want to thank you for your leadership. She, Katie Pearson, and that team has done, have done a tremendous job putting together our summer programs. We have hundreds of kids throughout the county that are accelerating, remediating. And, you know, I'm most proud of this kindergarten transition program that we piloted this year. We have over 60 students over at Rhymes this year that'll be entering kindergarten or first grade with, without the gaps that we typically see when they enter kindergarten. And so we're really proud of that. And I want to thank you for your support of that and thank Ms. Spratley and the team. Please let Ms. Pearson know how grateful we all are for all that you all have done for our summer programs this year. So, I'm sorry, now I'll take the discussion agenda.
Okay. So 11.01.
The matter before the board is item 11.01, final approval of the 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak to this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I believe it is appropriate to close the public forum.
Superintendent, your recommendation?
Recommend final approval of the 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan.
You've heard the superintendent?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five o. 11.02?
The item before the board is item 11.02, Final Approval of the 2021-2022 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item, please come forward at this time.
Okay, Mrs. Sirdar.
David Sirdar, I've given you my address before. You have a budget here, and it is for Student Conduct and Policy Guide. I am part of an anonymous association. We have an Alateen. And, well, sometimes you don't know what to do with a kid, and you've got to get them arrested. But you could make them take classes of Alateen, like they do in Drug Court. Where you work with judges, and you work with an association that is anonymous. And, well, basically, I'm on these boards. And, you know, I'd just like you to be aware of, there is an Alateen program.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, I believe it is appropriate to close the public forum.
Superintendent, your recommendation?
Recommend final approval of the 2021-2022 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five o. 11.04?
03. 11.03?
Or 3.
The item before the board is 11.03, Final Approval of Policy 7250, Naming of School Facilities. If anybody would like to speak to this issue, please come forward at this time.
Dr. Tibbetts?
Stephen Tibbetts, 412 Maple Tree Drive, Altoona, Florida. I just want to thank the board for their efforts over the past four years to finally get us to this point. And hopefully you'll pass and approve this policy tonight. But I would say directly to the superintendent, once they do that, it is imperative that you, your district staff, your principals, your school advisory committees get on board to make this work. And as an aside, I want to stand here and say, in spite of the wacko groups around this state and country that think they know how to run schools, they need to come here and watch what you've done. I think we lose track of how important it is that you take care of the kids in spite of the politicians. Please keep up your good work.
Thank you, Dr. Tibbetts. And thank you for being a driver on the naming of facilities. Okay Superintendent, we have a recommendation.
I recommend final approval of Policy 7250, Naming of School Facilities.
You've heard the superintendent. Have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. I was going to say with discussion.
All those...
Yeah, I just, I, yes, I also wanted to thank Superintendent and the district leadership teams and all of the people who served on your committees and Dr. Tibbetts for serving as my designee for the work that was put in for this. I know we've talked about it and talked about it as a long time coming. We appreciate your persistence, and we appreciate you always being here to support us. So, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five o. 11.04 now.
So Dr. Landry is coming forward this evening. I sent the board an email. This one is, the reason why she's presenting tonight is because there was not an opportunity to workshop any of the changes to the mental health plan. The state did not release the template until a week or two ago. It was very late in coming to us, and by statute, it must be approved in order for us to get the mental health allocation funding by August the 1st. And so this was our only opportunity. I know that Dr. Landry and others had asked the state for an extension since the template came so late. And they said by statute, they're not going to waive that because they're going to adhere to the statute. So, I've asked her just to give us a brief update. The template has changed tremendously. Our goals and the work moving forward is, because we're seeing great success in this area, are not that different. But because you're looking at something that looks very different than what you approved before, I've asked her to go over those changes. And just to give us some highlights of some of the successes that we've seen. She'll be back with us on August the 16th. As of now, I think, I've heard from all of you, except for one, it's available on that date to give us an overview of the remaining dollars that we have through the .75 mils that we collect to be able to focus on mental health. So you'll hear more about it. You'll get specific data and other information at that workshop. But for the purposes of approving this item, I felt like you and the public needed to see some of the, of the highlights of the plan before you, before I ask you to approve it. So, Dr. Landry.
Thank you. Gosh, you just said two paragraphs of what I needed to say.
Oh, well, good. We skipped all that, right?
I'm so happy to be here tonight with you to talk to you about the amazing mental health supports that are continuing to happen for all of our students. As the superintendent said, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of a mental health application. This was attached to my agenda item, and if you had a chance to look at it, you realize very quickly that it looks different from what they've asked us to submit in previous years. In previous years, what they've asked us to do is submit our entire comprehensive plan. And if you remember that plan, it was very big and comprehensive, and we all love it. This year, the state is asking us to hyper-focus on one or two goals that align with our plan and talk about evidence-based practices for how we're going to meet those goals. So that's really all this plan is about. But before, and I'm going to walk you through that in just a moment, but before I do, I wanted to share a few things that are worth celebrating from this last year. If you recall, in Lake County, we have a very strong MTSS infrastructure, and that stands for the Multi-Tierred System of Supports. So that's, that's the framework through which we deliver all of our academic, our behavior, social instruction for our children. It's all kids. So many of our mental health supports, services, and referral pathways are delivered through this multi-tiered system. Tier one is the level that is for all students. So in terms of tier one, for mental wellness, mental health awareness, prevention, and early identification of students who may be at risk, every one of our students has implemented at least one tier one program, and some of them have more than one. So I just wanted to just throw a few numbers at you. So, Purpose Prep that we're using for mental and emotional health education is being used in 20 schools. Sanford Harmony is being used in 13 schools. Start With Hello from Sandy Hook is being used in 17 schools, and the list goes on. But I just wanted to make you aware of the breadth of programs that are being used and that every school has a very strong tier one program, which is really to be celebrated, especially given the size of our district. We also had a very successful mental health awareness month across the district that was in May. And when I bring the data to you at the workshop, I'm going to bring you some... And when I bring the data to you at the workshop, I'm going to bring you some stories from our schools, some just examples of things that they're doing. I know how we all love to actually see the kids and hear those stories. Our annual report is peppered with those stories throughout. So I'm going to bring some of those to you in August. Another thing I wanted to tell you about, I've talked with you about in the past about a universal screener. And we actually had a very successful year last year with what we tried to do. Per state statute, all of our students in grades six through 12 have to receive at least five hours of mental health instruction, right? So we are doing that through Purpose Prep this last year. So that's all students, grades six through 12. So at that same time, we took the opportunity to use that as a universal screener. So we did that using what we call an exit ticket. So after the delivery of the instruction, every student was given an exit ticket to monitor their own well-being and to monitor whether or not they wanted to see a mental health professional. And then to ask them to rate their own mental health and their own mental well-being, which is the first time we're doing that. So we're, we're proud of our move in that direction. We've, in the past, been pretty focused on what we think about kids. We need to start asking the kids how they're feeling, how they're perceiving what we're doing and the supports we're giving them. So anyway, so the exit ticket, I wanted to just throw a few numbers at you because it's amazing. So, over 17,000 students took the youth mental health, the five-hour mandated mental health instruction. 17,000 because it's six through 12. About 70% of them, so it's about 11,000 kids, filled out the exit surveys. It's 11,000 kids. For the exit survey, we, for the universal screener, we focused on two things. Students who asked to, to see a mental health professional. And 8.6% of the kids of the 11,000 asked to see a professional. Of those, 146 received continuing support from a liaison or outside agency. Of those, 19 were serious enough to need a suicide ideation screener, suicide risk screener. And then of those, six were of high risk, so they needed further intervention. On the other side, the other question we really looked at was when we asked students to rate their own mental health. They were given a scale of five from excellent to poor. And so for any students who rated them, their own mental health as poor, they were seen immediately by a mental health professional. So that was 3.1% of the 11,000 kids. So about 360 children. All of them were seen by a mental health professional on our school campuses. Of the 364, about 70 of them asked, needed extra supports. 12 of them needed a suicide case record. And then only one needed to be Baker acted and required this supportive of a Baker Act. So, this data, in terms of universal screening, is amazing that we touched 17,000 students. And with all of our supports we have in place, one needed to be Baker acted. And that's one of our main goals, is to decrease the number of Baker Acts that we do. So, I wanted to share that with you. I'm very proud of that data for us. All right. One more success I wanted to share with you, because we talked about it before, and that's regarding peer programs. One thing we really want to do is increase the, the amount of time and the ways that kids support each other. So, I introduced you to BeFreeLake. It's a local, non-for-profit community agency. And with them, we have been implementing the You're Not Alone program. This program is a student leadership program where ambassadors, students, are trained to recognize signs and symptoms of anxiety, depression, and stress among their peers and then direct them to a trusted adult. One aspect of the program that I really like is all the ambassadors, their parents, we bring them in and they get the youth mental health first aid training, that six-hour training that we all have to do in the school system. So we're engaging not only students, but their families. So, in the year 1920, we had 111 student ambassadors at our three South End High Schools. Last year, this, last year just passed, we increased that to 321 ambassadors at all eight high schools. So, next year, it's of course in our plan to continue to expand our You're Not Alone program at the high schools. And we want to bring a peer leadership framework like that one to our middle schools. So we want to bring that, the, the peer mentoring ideas down to the middle school. Okay. So for the sake of time, I want to make sure I get to the application, walk you through it, and then answer any and all questions that you have. I brought copies. If you would like a copy, didn't print one, just going to walk you through this. If you could go to page three, that's where our part begins. The state has required two parts. Would you like a copy?
Yeah, we don't have it.
Do you have it for the screen or no?
No. I just gave, I just assumed you would print the copy. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I, I have more.
See if anyone in the public. You guys are just going to stand by. We have a copy we can share with y'all up here. We just hand this out.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You like to pass these around if anyone wants to.
There you go.
Well, thank you. So, beginning on page three, the first part of the application has to do with youth mental health awareness training. You've heard me talk about this for many years, beginning in school year 1819. What the state said was that all school board employees must be trained in that six-hour youth mental health awareness training, right? So, we've been working on that for years. And it's been hard, especially this last year with COVID and all of the restrictions with quarantining. But we knew we needed to continue the training. So, the National Council actually created a blended model for the training. So now people can receive some or all of that training virtually. So we're implementing the virtual model. And then we received a small grant where we were able to offer trainings every other Saturday during the school year and Wednesday, early evenings. So we were able to do it outside of contract time. And I'm so proud that those classes were consistently full. So, people are really like this training and they want to get trained. So, given that, we are sitting at 57% of our employees trained and certified. That's as of June 30th. So those trainings will continue. And we provide this training two ways. On district professional development days and non-student teacher workdays, we have teams of certified instructors that kind of go from school to school and mass-train the schools. We've done that so far with seven schools, food services, and transportation services. So, that's one very effective way to roll out that training is to kind of do everybody at the school at once. And then, we also offer twice a month this training out at student services for anyone who would like to sign up. Lake County Schools currently has 11 trainers to deliver the training. So part of my goal is to increase that by at least five. We definitely need some more trainers. We're hoping to hit 75% next year at this time. And then in one more year, we will have trained 100%. The other part of this training plan has to do with recertification. The certification that you receive with the six-hour training is good for three years. And then, we are paying for folks to take a one-hour online course that, that recertifies you for another three years. So you don't have to take the whole six hours again. That's the basic course and then you can take the one hour. So, this training piece is obviously very important to the state. And so if you turn to pages four and five, what you can see is the budget there that they have provided. They've given each district what they're calling a mini allocation of money that must be spent on this youth mental health first aid training for our employees. So you can see our allocation there was a little over 50,000. And this delineates all the things that we will be spending it on. All has to do with youth mental health first aid. On page six, you see a lot of checks and check boxes. These are assurances. And our plan in the previous years has been filled with details about how we were going to meet these assurances. My personal thinking is that I think that the state folks are tired of reading the district's very, very comprehensive plans because they're very long. And they probably trust us now. We're in year three. We probably know what we're doing with these assurances. So now, all the assurances are just check boxes. So instead of having to explain in detail how we're meeting these, we just check and what we've been doing in the past will remain the same. On page seven, the second part begins. And that has to do with the goals that we're setting as a district. We've chosen two dis, two goals. The first one is at least 80% of Lake County schools will implement a tier one evidence-based program with fidelity to reduce the likelihood of at-risk students developing social, emotional, or behavioral health problems. So we know that we have a tier one program in at least every school. This year, we're going back and doing fidelity and to see how we can support schools to increase the participation in those programs. The second goal may look familiar to you. It aligns with the superintendent's goal, one of her goals, and is to increase the number of students receiving direct services. And by that, I mean individual and group counseling from school-based mental health professionals by at least 10%. And so, I don't mean our outside agencies. I mean our folks that we are direct hire in the schools. We want to increase direct services with them by at least 10%. Then, the next nine pages of this document describes all of the evidence-based practices and programs that we will be using to meet these two goals. And you will recognize the names, zones of regulation, restorative practices, Sanford Harmony. These are the programs schools have already been using for all the years they've been doing mental health. So what we did is we had to include it in this document. They're all evidence-based. That's what we'll be using to gather data to meet those two goals. So, there are just a few things left I wanted to point out at the end. I just wanted to show you on page 17. These are the ratios that the state asked us to explain. We include other ratios in our big plan, but these are the ones that they asked for. And so those are there. You can see school counselors, school social worker, and school psychologist, and other mental health provider. I didn't want you to think that that's the totality of our mental health professionals because it's not. We include other people as well, like school nurses, for example. But they didn't necessarily ask about, about our ratio with school nurses. So, that's why, just, that's what's only there. And then on page 19, you see a list of all the agencies that we have contracts with. All of those folks are there to assist us when educational interventions and supports are not enough. So when students and families need deeper, more broad support, we can refer to these folks. You see the very first one is Livestream Behavioral Center. We have a very long and special relationship with Livestream. And continuing into the next year, we will be expanding that and continuing all of those same practices that we've done in the previous two years with Livestream coming up. Nothing's changed there. And then on the next two pages is our, is the allocation. It's the actual budget. And so I just wanted to clarify that this is not the village money. So this is only the money that came from the state specifically for mental health. Last year, our allocation was 1.5 million, a little over 1.5 million. This year, it increased to 1.8 million. And you can see on these two pages, all of the things that we are including in our plan. Importantly, there is our relationship and our contract with Livestream. And FEFP there, the charter school allocation. So, all of the charter schools, just in previous, as in previous years, are going to be getting their proportionate share of the funding from this allocation, writing their own plans, and monitoring their own plans. So I'm responsible for submitting their plans when I submit ours to the state on, on August 1st. But other than that, they kind of work independently on their own mental health plans.
So each, each charter school will submit their own plan and the state will either accept or reject?
So they have to do the exact same thing we do. So they have this application and then, yes, the state either accepts it or not. Okay, so.
Very good.
Let me pause and answer any and all questions that you have.
Just according to statute, we need, we need an SEL program in, in the schools, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
SEL programs are part of the mental health statute, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, like, you have here Purpose Prep, which you mentioned was one of the SEL programs. But like, over here, it's dialectical behavior therapy. That's something that's only given when you have a therapist. Like therapists know that. That's not.
That's correct.
That's, that's not a program in the schools, right?
It, it, okay. So our two goals, one is about tier one and then one is about tier two and tier three? And those kids that need high-level tier three, some of those students need that kind of.
And, but they'll get it from a trained professional.
Absolutely.
It's not like something that is being taught in the school.
That's still Livestream, right? That's a really super.
Some of our licensed folks do that, not many of them.
But like cognitive behavioral practices, that's common therapy.
That's very, yeah, that's, our counselors do that. Our school counselors do that and our school psychologists. But the point is, Mr. Mathias, they must be trained. It has to be in their scope of work.
Right. So I just wanted to point out, like, because in here, you have Stanford Harmony, which is an SEL program. And the, I, I don't know the other, all of them, but the Purpose Prep one. But the, at the end of the chart, even though they're in the same spot, they're not the same sort of programs.
They're not.
Okay.
Right.
And the util, the youth mental health program, the training that we've talked about, that the students have to take the six hours or the five hours or whatever it is, there's still an option that they can do all of those hours in one day?
Unfortunately.
Why?
Because I try to be as flexible as I can be to help principals decide what's best for their campuses. Last year, there were fewer schools this year. Because last year, when we implemented in one day, I think it was clear in, in a lot of the data that the students didn't like it.
Right.
So, again, I came forward with options. And I did not recommend that option, but there are a couple of principals that feel very strongly that that's the only way it works in their particular schedule.
So if it's about kids, I'm not sure why we're still offering it as an option. I'm just being honest. Like, there's no time to process in a high school day or a middle school day where you're sitting and watching five hours of videos. Like, nobody's going to, I wouldn't sit and watch five hours of video and retain any, anything from that. So, if we want meaningful data. The other question I had was about the tier one supports. And so, tier one, from my understanding, is your entire population, right? So, are we providing all of the support to every student on our campus?
Okay. So, every, every campus has at least one tier one support.
And that could just be the five hours?
It could be, for, for, only for middle and high school.
Right.
But it is mostly, most likely not, because lots of schools are doing two programs. So like, the high schools all did the, the instruction, but then they also all did You're Not Alone, which is the peer program?
What about elementary?
So elementaries kind of pick the ones that fits best, that's best with their campus. A lot of them are doing PBIS.
Right.
Restorative practices. Sanford Harmony was really popular this year. And then, they did lots of Sandy Hook kinds of things. So, they'll kind of do one or two things as well.
Okay. And the local assessment with Sanford Harmony? There's a local assessment we use?
I'm sorry. Are you referring to what I said we were going to measure?
Mm-hmm.
We will check with Sanford Harmony. They're an evidence-based program, so they may have an assessment. If they don't, locally created was one of the words that I use for us creating a fidelity assessment.
So we don't have one yet?
No.
Okay. So that's part of the plan for this year?
It is part of the plan. And we, you're either going to have to, from the companies, get their fidelity assessments or create one locally for each of the programs. Because we really do want to kind of dive in and ask some of these questions. So, you say you're doing it, but let's take a little bit closer look and make sure we're doing it with fidelity and that all the students are being served like we think they are, so.
And that was one of my biggest concerns, like when I looked at, whenever you were talking about, how are you going to measure the success? It was all about how many students we're serving. At some point, shouldn't we see the number of students we're serving decline if our services are working? And so I know that's a long-range goal. Do we have long-range goals? And I know we're talking about, these are the mental health dollars. I appreciate your clarification earlier to me about the submission of the plan. I know, I get confused with, this plan's due every year on August 1st. And so why in the world are we waiting until now to do it? That's frustrating. We've expressed before having a time constraint put on us because we're, we have to have a deadline and that's frustrating. I understand the template was new, but this, you've, you've said, these are things we've been doing. This is not new. And so, I guess it's just fitting it into the template that was strange?
It was very difficult to work with, yes.
So, I would like to see, and, and I'll, I'll speak to this, like, probably a little bit more in the workshop, I think. Because it, we say it's not related to the village, but I've seen the village talked about in here as well. So I know that they're extremely closely related.
They are.
And so, I would like to think that if we have put this much of a significance in this program, and it is a big program, and it was new, you sat in front of us, what, two years ago and said, we got all this, we, we've got all of this support and we're so excited. This is brand-new. And I, I mean, like, it's a new program, that we would be monitoring this program. And it, it would be a focus of ours, especially because it's additional taxpayer dollars. This is not, I understand that, but it's wrapped into what we're doing. And it should be clear. The big picture should be clear to everybody. So I appreciate the discussion tonight. And I look forward to more discussion about it because I have some concerns with the outcome measures and some goals that we're setting for ourselves.
In terms of all of the positions or in terms of this plan? In terms of all the positions or in terms of this plan?
All of it.
Okay. Are you okay with the goals that are listed for this application?
Some of them, there were some, and I don't want to take time at the meeting to go over, but there was one in particular that I was, when I was reading it, it became very different. It was the Behavior Education Program. It was like a list of questions versus the implementation. So I didn't write a page number on this one, but Behavior Education Program, it was the name of one of the programs. If you go to that one, instead of, instead of on your implementation where it says at the top, how will you implement it? And go to it. It's a list of questions. It's not like what we would do to implement it. It says, behavior checklist, the personnel and location needs, coordinator, supervisor, substitutes, daily progress report, personalized name, behavior expectations, is, must be positively stated. Is the form teacher-friendly? I'm like, what is this? Like, how is this what we are implementing? Is there a referral system? And then I'm thinking, who will be responsible for examining daily data? We have one mental health liaison at a school, and how many teachers? And so is our teachers involved in this? So did I have questions beyond this? Yes, I did.
Okay. And I'd be happy to answer any specifics about the programs, anytime. Of course, I don't want to take up time here, but I do want to say that I think that, I agree with you, this one's written very differently, and I think what I have here is a little bit of a product of different people writing different sections, and so the styles don't match beautifully. But BEP is a program, a Tier Two program, that we've been using for years, and it's implemented very nicely, and it involves the school counselors and the teachers, and, but they're already doing it, and they really enjoy the program, and I do think it's successful. So again, we'll be looking at fidelity.
I just didn't communicate it. And so it was just kind of confusing. The whole thing was kind of confusing to me.
I apologize. It was confusing to us when it first came out as well. But in August, we will bring all of the outcome data for all of the positions listed in the village. And so I think that will be, give you a broader look.
So as I, oh, I'm sorry. As I, as I take a closer look at that particular section, are, do we, do we answer those questions when we submit this, or?
No, those are questions for, to be asked during the implementation of the program.
It just makes you, it blows your mind up a little bit more. Like, who is doing this? Who is doing the work? When is it gonna be done?
It looks to me like there's a whole bunch of questions that we don't know the answer to, instead of...
Are you on page 12?
Yes, 12 and 13. Like, who is responsible for coaching, individually coaching teachers with proper implementation is necessary? Like, that sounds like we should be writing in our plan, who is responsible for coaching the teachers, not asking that question.
Especially if it's something we've been doing.
You're right.
Yes.
I share your...
Well, so I can easily take a closer look at this and reword it so that the style is much closer to the other programs.
I mean, that's, that's not style.
Someone just didn't do a very, someone didn't do a very good job of describing the program.
Okay. So maybe we need to just look at that section.
The implementation of the program. I don't know that it's a description of the program that's left. It's the, it's our implementation of the program. And like, that's where my mind kind of went, was, oh my gosh, what are we agreeing to do? And like, I saw the word fidelity throughout the document.
Yes.
And how do we document fidelity with the time management that this proposes? And this is just one of the programs. That's why I asked the question, are schools doing multiple programs? And like, what about the kids that maybe aren't on a spectrum for any kind of social, I mean, not that any middle school student doesn't need some support, but you, Tier One support would be enough. So that's where, that's where I, like, really, when I sat down and started reading this, it made me go, I don't know that I'm ready to agree to this. Or is it something we're already doing? If it's something we're already doing, I don't think it sounds like it's something we're already doing.
It is something we're already doing. Absolutely, yeah.
Would it be possible for us to sit in partial or one of the five-hour trainings?
Absolutely.
I mean, can we see the actual training or actually see what the children, what they see?
So we can do one of two things or both, if you'd like. I can forward you all of the materials, so you can go on and have a look, and then you're more than welcome, I would think, to pop in at a high school?
I think we would have a better feel if we could see it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I liked, I will also say that I liked hearing you say that one of your goals going forward is hearing back from students and staff. So I know anytime that they get a required training, there's obviously negative, you know, dissonance that comes back from that. But I, I don't know if we have an option on what we use or what products we're using, or if our teachers are finding them to be helpful, or if the students are finding them to be helpful. And I think that is really important to, I know later, I think when you get into your Tier Two and Tier Three practices, you have in there where you've got some measure with the students are saying, whether there was a gain or a benefit that was from the intervention that was provided. But I don't know about the student, the five-hour training. I know that it's required. I'm not, I know that it's required, and I know our staff has required training, but I hear more of the, it is worthless. And I hate that. Like, that hurts my heart, knowing that these people have so much work to do, right? That bothers me. And if we're truly, if we are truly committed, which this board, I know, has been committed, and we, this county has proven that they're committed, committed with the support that they've given us, I would like to see us really move it. Like, let's move it, then. We have the people, we have the support, we have the dollars. So if it's not what's meeting our needs, then what can we get to meet our needs? Because certainly, we are financially able to do it now, but we may not be for long if what we put in place isn't what's making an impact.
So the data that we bring in August will have, it will include student feedback. We ask students if, how they felt about the instruction.
And will that include, like, some of the SEL programs? Because it's a little unclear, like, who does what when? I mean, I think that's sort of what you're, so what you were getting at.
Yes, the plan is much clearer in terms of details of implementation.
And that's the last thing I'll say, and I promise I won't say anything else, but there was a section in here where teachers got trained, the teachers are getting trained, but that's the two-hour required training. But then later in some of the thing, I know you mentioned that the teachers provide the five hours of training, that it, like, let's just say that I'm a classroom teacher, that I might facilitate those five hours, like, throughout a month or throughout whatever with my students, and then I'm the one that facilitates the exit ticket. So again, I went, in my mind, back to, is this just an extra thing that we're putting on teachers to do?
So, so the teachers don't facilitate the exit tickets? The students fill them out, and those go back to the mental health liaisons? And that task of seeing those kids within 24 hours, everybody who needs to be seen, goes to school psychologist, school social workers, mental health liaisons, and specialists. So they have to share that because it's a very big job. Teachers were given support and training on, here's the program, here's what the facilitation with your class would look like. And if there, and we did actually have some teachers who didn't feel comfortable doing it. And so even if after support, they didn't feel comfortable doing it, we had an alternative plan. Like, the mental health liaison would take that class, or we would combine two classes, because we really do understand that some of these topics are very uncomfortable to engage in discussion with kids. So we did include the teachers, and you have to. There's only, that's the only way to do it, if you touch every kid. But we really provided them with as much support as we could, and I haven't heard anything negative from teachers. The first year, yes, they did not like what we did the first year. This last year, I didn't, I heard only positive things. So we'll share the data with you, and whatever, if you hear anything, you can let us know too.
I want to make a couple of comments. Everybody close to that? First of all, the numbers are amazing. And the entire idea of, since I've been on the board since Sandy Hook in Parkland, was that for the first time, with the help of the voters in the village, even though it's a village, but it's tied together.
Yes, sir.
That we had the opportunity for that early intervention and the recognition, and then getting these kids helped. I would like to speak, Mr. Ricard, you had a couple of comments about some things y'all were doing in Miami, or were doing in Miami, that in our case, the kids that are disruptive, we get them out of the classroom, and they have what's called PASS, which is Positive Alternative to School Suspension, which is working on changing their behavior combined with the academic rigor. So I think we're a bit different, maybe, than what you've seen before. And then we also have Lake Success, which again, is working on the mental health component of these kids, that these are kids that are more at risk, that they are getting more intense counseling to change their behavior with the hopes that they would go back to their home school. So these are amazing, this is amazing work that your department's doing and the district is doing. So, well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So are we ready to make a recommendation?
I know you were gonna go back and look specifically at pages 12 and 13 and maybe make some revisions, maybe send that back out to the board.
I am going to make revisions to that appropriate, yes.
But in order to comply with the August 1st deadline, and with most applications, they do allow revisions if you want to change them. Should the board have further input, or you want to make some changes to these goals or any of the implementation? As you read through it more or after the workshop on the 16th, we can certainly send those back to the state. So with that, and I did want to mention to you as well, there was a press release that went out, I think it was last week or the week prior, from the Department of Education. Lake Manyola High School is one of the first in the state of Florida to start a student ambassador program. And it has been hugely successful in partnership with BeFreeLake. And so now it's in all of our high schools, but the work that they're doing specifically at Lake Manyola High School has been recognized statewide, and they're one of the 25 districts that Casey DeSantis has now identified as a pilot for this project. So we're real excited to have one of those pilot schools here in our county, working alongside the First Lady. This is a pet project for her. She's invested a lot of time and energy and resources into youth mental health, and so it's great to, she actually came here two years ago, I guess it was, and met with some of the students. And so it was nice to, they circled back and said, hey, we recognize that you guys were kind of cutting-edge with that ambassador program, and so we want to highlight Lake Manyola and use them as one of our models for the state of Florida. So congratulations to the great work at Lake Manyola High School on that. And with that, I will recommend approval of the 2021-22 Lake County Schools Mental Health Application.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Have motion?
So moved?
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Bye-bye. Okay. Superintendent's report.
I had two letters of condolence that were sent. First of all, Sandra Rowe, she's the school secretary at Leesburg High School, she lost her husband, Bill Rowe. And also Kendra Abner is the administrative coordinator in our ESE department. She lost her brother, Adam Dyson. So those were letters of condolence that were sent. Just a few updates. We had a great weekend. This was the annual stepping out for education event, and I just want to thank the Education Foundation and all those who put themselves out there to step out for our kids. It is stressful. It's a lot of work. They devoted a lot of time and energy, a lot of sweat and tears, probably a little bit along the way, too, to get on that stage and to dance for our kids and raise the thousands of dollars that were raised this weekend that will go directly back to support our schools and our students. So I just want to thank everyone who stepped out for our kids, again, the Education Foundation, and congratulate our own Dr. Emily Felton, who was the Mirrorball winner. She was amazing. The board was there. She is very talented, and her dance moves are pretty impressive. So congratulations to her. Also on the agenda tonight, you approved the contract, it's not really a contract, it's just an agreement with Habitat for Humanity. We are able this year to partner with Habitat in all three of our construction academies. So you've been sent invitations to three different groundbreaking ceremonies. Every city has identified a property that they've been able to lend towards this project in collaboration with Habitat. So both Southlake High School, Leesburg High School, and Eustis High School, their construction academies will all be building a home with Habitat. And our many builders and contractors within the county, this is such a countywide effort to provide these kids such great job skills, give them work. They've been working during the summer, some of them making thousands of dollars over the summer, being able to work for some of these folks, doing plumbing and electrical. And so we are really excited that we have that opportunity. So I just want to take you back to what you approved earlier was that. And also, starting this Sunday, we're really excited, we've been talking about, how do we enhance our communications and make, cast a broader net to get more of our stakeholders as part of our ongoing communication efforts and stay informed? So we are launching what we're calling Super Sundays, and these are short video segments that will go out every Sunday with a specific theme. The first one will go out this Sunday, August 1st, and it's highlighting the top five things everyone needs to know as we head back to school. So we'll be addressing some of the frequently asked questions that we're seeing. I'll be highlighting these, and so it's kind of Super Sundays, superintendent, get it, so Super Sundays on Sundays, with the superintendent. And we're gonna be pushing that out to all of our families via email. We've, you know, the social media's reaching the people who are following us. So how do we get all these videos, short little clips, good information into the hands of all of our stakeholders? So we're gonna ask everybody to help push those out every Sunday. If you have frequently asked questions, send them our way. We'll take those, maybe make them one of our series for a Sunday. That'll be followed up, starting in September, with some podcasts and other things that we're doing. So Ms. Owens is spearheading some really extensive and intensive communication efforts, so really getting out there with these. So we're excited to get those filmed this week. We'll be filming the first one, and you'll see it on Sunday. And we're also, just sticking with the theme of communication, we'll be launching a back-to-school webpage. It will also go out on Monday, August 2nd, very prevalent on our website. It's gonna have school calendars, bell schedule, code of conduct, all the bus route information, free reduced lunch information, and all of our back-to-school safety protocols, which will include all of, all the COVID questions that we've been getting, will all be addressed as well. And I'll also highlight that on our, our first Super Sunday. I have a meeting on Thursday with the Health Department, so we'll be talking about some of those processes and protocols that we had in place last year, what we need to maintain, and things that we can maybe do a little differently this year. So, so more to come on that. I'll know more after the meeting on Thursday and certainly let you know, and we'll get our safety protocols back out there. I know people are waiting for them. But we do know, and we'll continue to reiterate, that masks are optional, and I know we get a lot of questions about that, and they will remain optional, so...
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay. Mrs. Luke?
Well, you know, I was gonna throw some praise out there as well for the stepping out. I think Superintendent did a great job in covering all that, I'm sure, no doubt. People are gonna be talking about Dr. Felton for a very long time, and the amazing talent that she displayed. So I guess I'm gonna kind of segue into another part of stepping out that I thought was worth noting, and that is our culinary chefs. Holy cow. Okay, so any kid taking culinary has a great opportunity because they are being taught by incredible talent. They, these dishes that these folks had whipped up, wow, it was amazing, absolutely amazing. So I guess it's just another testament of the amazingness of our CTE that we've got going on in schools, right there, so...
Well done.
Well done.
And I guess I'll take a third aspect of stepping out. I would like to thank all the organizations and other people throughout the community who are not affiliated with the school. We had some local business owners and other people who also chose to participate. And I think it's phenomenal when people from the outside also get in and cry and lose tears and help us to raise money for our children. So we certainly are appreciative of that. And the superintendent talked about Dr. Felton, but what she did not tell you is that she has some pretty amazing moves herself. We were all privileged with the opportunity to see her have some of those on display. I'd also like to compliment Mr. Ward. I'd also like to compliment Mr. Ward. I've had the opportunity for a number of years to look at school budgets, and I greatly appreciate the transparency, I greatly appreciate the time and the energy, and as a new board member, I greatly appreciate the time that you will spend with me when I have questions. And I guess with that said, I'm done.
I just decided to address the COVID issues. As many of you know, I have a doctorate in biochemistry, and I've been tracking this COVID issue the, and, you know, the entire time. So what I wanted to bring to your attention was, this is, this is a chart that my husband made. We've been tracking COVID since, well, forever, but it starts in 2020, and you can see the going ups and downs, and this was our, our big peak here. And this week, we're back up to a level of COVID that we haven't seen since last February. And therefore, I've been getting comments, emails from constituents about concerns about this. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC have been recommending masks for children, and specifically for the children under 12 who are not vaccinated, who cannot, who do not have the option to vaccinate. Just to point out the difference in transmission now between this Delta variant and the regular one, transmission occurs with the Delta variant in about five to 10 seconds instead of minutes, and what's known as the R zero, which is the number of people that are typically infected. COVID was two, one person would typically infect two people. Now with this Delta variant, one person typically can infect up to, well, eight to even more, but I just went with eight. So I've, I've been looking for compromises, you know, things that we can all live with, and I wanted to suggest some sort of color-coded rating system, because as a parent right now, I would put us, like, you know, I personally would put us in a red zone, right? Where like, it's high, COVID's high. I would hope that most of the kids at the school would wear masks right now. And as with any other spike that we've seen, every single time, it will go down, it will take weeks, and it will go down, and maybe this area would be like a yellow, and maybe we would have a green zone. And I think that that would be helpful for the school communities, until we can get children to have that optional vaccine. The other suggestion, and I thought, I don't know if we want to discuss this at Wednesday's, or not Wednesday, next Monday's workshop, was considering a, a rule or whatever for elementary masks, maybe through sixth grade, but then opt, having a parental opt-out, because I do not think at this point that there's any parent who doesn't, hasn't made up their own mind, and I don't think it's appropriate to put a child, you know, have, have a rule that a parent feels very strongly against, and I think we're at a point in the pandemic that we could have that sort of a situation. The concern for parents is simply that we can't vaccinate young children yet, and so they're not necessarily protected from it. I am also, I, the superintendent did invite me to go to this meeting this week, so I think we'll both have more information on Monday. So that's all I have, and I don't know if you guys wanted to talk at all, or just think about it.
Let's think about it. I think it's a workshop discussion, so, not for tonight. Okay, so I want to recognize really quickly, we had someone, it was eight point, what was it? You know the number, what, what, what number was it, Tom? Eight point oh three, there you go. So Tom's here, not that he comes to every board meeting, but his company, Wharton Smith, who's just finishing Four Corners for us, was awarded the contract, or beginning the negotiation, to maybe get the contract. But I was wondering, Tom, if you want to give us a quick update on Four Corners, since you're here?
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, my name is Tom White here, I'm the project executive with Wharton Smith. I want to start by saying thank you to the board for your support of the students of Lake County. Two years ago, we had the opportunity, we were given the opportunity to partner with the district to design and build the Four Corners K8 Project at that time, that's what we called it. It's now called the Lake Point Academy, it's a beautiful facility. I want to report that it, it finished on time despite a pandemic, cost escalations, material shortages. We were able to overcome those challenges. I've got to give a shout out to the facilities group, John Carr, Dave Parker, great team to work with, the whole Lake County school group, you guys are a great group to work with, and we really appreciate the opportunity. If you haven't had a chance to come by and see the campus, it's beautiful. They're setting up the furniture currently. We've been working with the principal, making sure that the school's ready, because we know come August, those school buses are pulling up, and those students are jumping out, and it's gonna be exciting time for, for the district. So we're excited to be a, a part of it. Also, I want to thank you for the opportunity to negotiate the next Aurelio Cole K8 Project. On that one, I'd like to also thank Dominic Giannani, as well as Emmett Sapp with GSB Builders. We were able to team with them as a local contractor, excited about getting that one started. We always look at bringing value to the county, and being able to deliver a project, saving money, and just something that you can be proud of, and the community can be proud of. So with that, just thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you very much. And with that, me and the jury.